Well, hello there San Bernardino and good evening. I am excited to be here tonight and let's go over the agenda. I'll wait for a couple of minutes, but it's a pretty light agenda, I think for this evening and um but we got some good stuff. There is some good stuff. But we just have to make sure everybody jumps on. So, okay, here we go. Let me get into the chat. Hi Paula, hi Scott. So. Okay. I guess we can get into it. I can see that we're live. So if you want, this will be posted to YouTube and Instagram as well. And a copy in and then post it onto next door. So the council is having their meeting this Wednesday, Fel Town Library. And let's look at what they will be going over. So there is going to be closed session. They have a legal conference on existing litigation. Joseph Garibo individually versus City of San Bernardino. And then Michael Pace which versus the city of San Bernardino for workers' compensation. And then the employee appointment of the city manager. As far as I know, I don't know if they're appointing someone if they've if they're looking at applications. They were out for recruitment. And I know a couple of people that I know have received invitations. So we'll see what is going on with that. Um, I, I wish that this would be more of a, and here's gonna be my thoughts on this. We've had some really bad picks for city manager, and so I would like to see a transparent process. I think that the top candidate should be brought forward to the community and we should get to ask some questions or have a Q and A time where the, the, the council asked some questions, but in a public setting and other cities have done it. I think we could do the same thing and just have more involvement in it. So we'll see what happens with the next city manager appointment. At seven o'clock, we'll have the invocation, the closed session report. There's uh four presentations. The first one is a is a proclamation for LGBTQ pride month for the city of San Bernardino. A proclamation for fatherhood awareness month in the city of San Bernardino. A proclamation for the National Law Enforcement Week for the city of San Bernardino from June twelfth through the sixteenth. And a presentation of the California Park and Rec Society Community Champion Award to Youth Sports Program Volunteer Constance Mural. So looks like we got good stuff there. Thank you, Scott, for liking my idea. Appointments, the water board appointment or reappointment of Thomas Brickley. The mayor has an appointment for the Charter Review Committee of Laetitia Briggs. That's interesting. Downtown Advisory Committee Appointment of Reverend Reginald Woods for the mayor's appointment. So that will be, I think, almost filling up all of her picks. Then public comments. So people have been asking, so for public comments, this is the time where you can talk about anything. There is no, like, if you want to talk about item ten, you wait till item ten. So this is where everybody will speak. And on things on the agenda, things not on the agenda. Then the city manager is going to give their update. And then we get into the consent calendar. So the item eight is a resolution accepting the California Energy Commission Automated Permit Processing Program Grant. So we will be receiving a hundred thousand grant from California Energy Commission uh for an automated permit processing program for establishing an online automated solar permitting platform. Okay, kind of cool. So that's a good one. Approval of the amendment number one to the professional service agreement for accounting consultant services with Ann Clark. I think we should take a look at this. Uh, I don't recall this service. If anybody else does, let me know. I don't know if there's anything going on. Uh, let's see. So it's recommended that the mayor and city council of San Bernardino authorize the execution of agreement number one to professional services. Ms. Clark has served the city of San Bernardino since January of two thousand sixteen in a consulting capacity, providing support to the Housing Division of Community Housing and Economic Development Department with a primary focus on fiscal administration of the Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, Neighborhood Stabilization Program, Investment Partnerships Program, and Low Mon Housing Housing Fund. The Housing Division has regained fiscal stability with the assistance of Ms. Clark, and she has made excellent progress at clearing many of the audit findings noted by the auditor relative to various federal grant programs the city receives. Additionally, Ms. Clark supports other departments, including Park and Recreation, Police Department, Public Works on behalf of the Finance Department. So this, okay, um, let's just look at this. This is interesting. Ms. Clarkson's has been performing a variety of duties as an independent contractor for the Housing Division under her existing contract since two thousand and sixteen. During that time, she has been instrumental in providing a crucial accounting assistance that has enabled the city to make substantial progress. Okay. The amendment to the extended contract is brought forth pursuant to chapter three point oh four approval authority that requires purchases over a hundred thousand dollars may only be authorized by the mayor and council. It increases not to exceed the amount of ninety one thousand, bringing the total contract not to exceed to two hundred and seventy five thousand, six hundred dollars. Council approval will allow the department and finance department to continue utilizing her services. So we are paying a contracted person from July of this one of, of this year till June of next year, ninety one thousand, two hundred dollars, and she's been on the payroll since two thousand sixteen. That uh, that's interesting. Here's why. And we've been paying her eighty four, about eighty eight thousand dollars a year. Interesting. Now, here's what I'm going to say, and you guys let me know. I don't support this. I'd not that I don't support Miss Anne, uh, not that I don't Miss Annie Clark. I, I don't know her. I don't, I'm sure she's doing great work. What I do not support is a almost decade long contractor. Obviously, this position is vital to the, the daily workings of the city. So much so that we have created a almost decade, I mean, it's a coming on seven year position for someone. We didn't think to build this into the budget. We didn't think to, to make this an in-house position. And this is someone that is that, that doesn't live here, is a sole proprietor out of Temecula. There wasn't anybody in our city or any other place or any, this is this, it's this type of thing that in my opinion defeats the purpose. Contractors are not supposed to come in and work forever. We secure our needs. If it's a long-term need, we, we've create the position and fulfill it. So I, I think that's crazy. That someone just, and, and where was the RFP? Did we go out for an RFP? I didn't see anything about an RFP. So that you have one person that you've salaried for for almost a decade. Well, not for, for seven years has had a job here that I didn't, I didn't even know about it. So and one approval contract, this, and this is the issue. The other issue that I have and guys jump in anytime I see you guys that um that this signing authority, so this person's in, in seven years until they change the threshold hasn't been brought forward for approval in seven years? No, they have been. Okay. So in, in seventeen, they authorized the First Amendment and then and again in seventeen, they authorized the another amendment in eighteen. I mean, every year we keep, they keep coming back. I, I just, I, I don't know. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that, but that's just me. So, okay, I'm glad we looked at that one. Let's see what else we got. Okay. Now we have nine, the approval of a professional service agreement. Oh, no, that was the one we looked at. Uh, the City Board Commission and Advisory Minutes. I think it's here's in something interesting. I got, I had a conversation with a couple of residents about the minutes and and the committees and everything. And I think this kind of speaks to the frustration that people are feeling in this community. A lot of people are like, you know, some of these boards can't even get quorum. How many times has the council taken the time to, to discuss the minutes of other meetings? And I want to talk about specifically right now, the Planning Commission. Because the Planning Commission spent five months discussing crushing and grinding. Went all the way through to draft a, a resolution for a code, a municipal code change and got to the point where they were like, hey, uh, I don't want this. We're, we're done. We, we say no crushing, grinding, and none of that's ever been brought back. None of it. And so these are just receiving files, and I understand that the commissions are advisory boards, but that's the whole point. They're advising based on a community consensus, and it's just a receiving file. So I, I want people to understand, I absolutely understand where you're coming from with how people are feeling about the boards and commissions. And, and you know, for the most part, them just being stacked with uh, from some with just political supporters and, and not people who actually want to do anything. So I get it. Uh, let's see, um. It says, I think the contractor law states if you work as a contractor for fortyish months for a single employee, they're considered employee. I, you know what? I, I thought so too. I didn't think you could stay on with a ten year um with a ten year or seven year contract, but every year renew, I guess. So we'll, we'll have to see. Uh, payroll, commercial payroll dispersments. That's fine. Annual review of the city's risk management and property insurance policies. Let's just take a look at that. Let's, I don't know. Let's see what it looks like from page one ninety eight. So approve the annual renewal, city purchases, excess workers' comp. Let's just see if there's a dollar now. Um, there have been unprecedented ins- insurance experience cycles since two thousand seventeen, significant catastrophic losses experienced in the worldwide insurance market. That sounds like it's expensive. The increased number and size of large liability claims continues to create very difficult market conditions. Factors that fuel the increased claims cost are varied and many, but they all result in more and larger claims, frequency of severity. Claims that previously resolved at five million to ten million range are costing public entities and their insurers twenty to thirty million dollars and higher to resolve. That's true. Inflation, right? All right, here we go. Let's talk about us. Property insurance. Uh, Prism members' rates for two thousand twenty-three are increasing. The degree of the rate increasing to each individual member varies within an established range dependent upon claims experience. The city's not to exceed premium of one point seven million represents an eight point eight percent increase. Jesus, over last year's not to exceed of one point six. The city's property insurance policy ended May thirty, March thirty-first and renewed on April one. Below is a breakdown. Wow. Commercial earthquake, auto, physical terrorism and sabotage. It's expensive. Workers' comp. General liability. Here we go. So this is, we talked about this a while ago for like if we get sued. So the city purchases excess general liability insurance to protect against catastrophic incidences such as bodily injury, property damage, personal injury, public official errors. Just gonna, let me reiterate that. Public official errors and omissions liability. So there, there problems that officials saw cause and their lies. Liability, automobile liability and employment practice liability. Thank you, Scott. Uh, the city's current excess general liability insurance coverage cost is one point almost, we'll call it one point six million and has a five million self-insured retention on a limit of twenty five million. This year's cost for the premium for coverage is estimated not to exceed two point one million. So the thing is, and I, I think we, we always have to make sure we are understanding the full scope of what we're talking about. We owe the first five million. And if you recall, this happened um about two years ago, two and a half years ago, with all the lawsuits that were being brought on us that we used to be in um we used to be culpable for the first one or two million, and we brought on so much that it became um a five million dollars we have to put upfront. And then they will pay the another twenty up to twenty, and after that it's on us. And that's a lot of money. So uh, this is why I wanted to look at it because there's a lot uh you know, it's just a lot. A lot of money goes into insurance and when you cause, as you guys know, right, uh, when you cause your own problems, it's, it's, it's going up. So um, I mean, look at the the estimated costs from one point six to one point seven, from four hundred and fifty three thousand for workers' comp to six hundred thousand. General liability from one point six million to two point one million, twenty six percent increase. Master crime thirteen thousand to fifteen thousand, thirteen percent change. Twenty uh, cyber liability, which is a big thing right now, uh, twenty nine thousand to thirty thousand to almost to forty nine thousand, so a forty percent jump. So I, I like, and, and you know, whether regardless of this is a huge negotiate, which I don't think anybody could negotiate on. I think having the conversation or at least having council members or, or, or staff explain this is important because we're adding a lot. Oh, you're adding one point, you're, you're, you're taking one point three million from the budget. So uh, let's see. Another reason we need to enforce ethics and behavior and actions of elected officials and employees. Absolutely. Absolutely. You remember, guys, we still have all of Valdivia's um lawsuits hanging in the balance. We also have the former city clerk, Gigi Hannah, and city attorney. Gary Sein's lawsuits are still pending out there. So we're not, we're not free from any of, of the litigation that was why we had to up our limits. And Sandra Bar, my understanding is her, her um her lawsuits and appeal. So we're going to be spending more money. And there's a very, very good chance the city's gonna end up being sued over the whole SLA thing with the downtown and it, it's crazy. It really is crazy. So uh, just be aware of that. Hey, we're gonna keep going. We've got, we did the risk management. So an agreement with IDS Group. It's recommended the mayor and council uh for an executive agreement for professional services, IDS Group for the design of Newmark Ballfield and Spicer Park Multipurpose Field Lighting. Okay. So as you guys know, they were talking about how they want to upgrade those facilities. This is where they do that. Number fourteen, an amendment to professional service agreement for on-call pre-qualified engineer services to twenty-three firms. And the Second Amendment, number two, professional services agreement on call, on call pre-qualified engineering services to one firm. Let's look at this. Uh, this is because here's Public Works again, on-call, outsource. So, okay. On-call outsourcing. In November of two thousand twenty-two, the council approved twenty-four professional service agreements for various engineering services. The approved PSA indication in section four B that the total amount paid for services by consultant shall not exceed fifty thousand per the assigned task. So these are the approved people. Um, as I went through earlier, I don't think but a handful of them, maybe three or four actually are in the city of San Bernardino. And that's always concerning to me as our money flows out for survey, geotekno, ering, landscaping, all this stuff, agriculture. Okay, so storm drains. This is the list. You guys can go through more in depth. Um. So now, because now what they're doing is they're revisiting this because the threshold is now a hundred thousand dollars per task without approval. I believe there is just a lack of oversight. An absolute lack of oversight at a hundred thousand dollars pop. And they're saying there's no general fund impact associated with the recommended action. There, there, but there is because now what would have needed approval past fifty thousand? Where you could say yay or nay, now we're at a hundred thousand. And without oversight. And I, look, I've cooled and I think I need to, I, I need to make this public. I'm sorry that I haven't. I've just been thinking about, I received, finally received the last bit of public records from the former city manager's signing authority. I mean, we alone have three point four million dollars of never seen of contracts approved out for other legal services. So I mean, there's money floating that this is, the public does not have their eyes on. And I think this created, looking at this, twenty-four firms who can receive up to a hundred thousand dollar contracts with no visual. It, it's an issue. And I don't, I don't at all trust the inside to keep track. And plus, if, and again, I'm gonna say this, the same thing about Annie, Miss Annie Clark's position. If these are so needed that you would have to put this many firms on, on, on call, why are these positions not built into the, the infrastructure of public works? Why are they not built into the infrastructure of the city? Why are these not budgeted controlled positions? Why are these, why is money flowing in and out like this? Just my own perspective on how we watch and maintain the budget. Um, let's see. Uh, Scott, serious lack of oversight. Oh, absolutely. I, yeah. Is there anything we can do to get them not to have so much power to change the charter? Uh, all of these decisions, Tim, are made at the dais. This was, this threshold changed from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. This was brought forth by Barbara Whitehorn, the Director of Finance last year, and the council approved it. The council was like, yeah, because we didn't know what you were doing at fifty thousand. Here's a great idea. We're gonna give you a hundred thousand per pop. And they really need to, I think, reconsider this. You can't talk about your fiduciary responsibility to the community and the public at large and then turn eye to a hundred thousand dollar purchases. I don't think, and, and, and given the track records of the city managers that we have had in the last couple of years, my goodness, no. Um, but it's not, it has nothing to do with the charter. It's, this is all just a vote on it on a Wednesday night. Uh, lazy government, yeah, absolutely. And because the public works directors use this. Oh, yeah. And let's talk about that. So here we go, again with the Public Works Director, Daniel Hernandez, who only knows how to get rid of positions and only knows how to go out for, for other people. And I just, like, the guy and we'll get to the letter I sent today, but the guy is just, he's, he's doing way too much with too little, like, he's he's, he's really problematic, I believe. Okay, so that's item fourteen. Discussion items, city clerk office system implementation updates. Receive and file an update on implementing the city works, uh, city, I'm sorry, pu- public records request management system through next request. So here's the thing, there was a big old post online and everybody's like, welcome, we're gonna have a new way to request public records. We're not getting our public records. It is taking months upon months extension upon extension to get any records out of the city. Now maybe I've been too hard on the city clerk's office, maybe. Because I received uh, an extension from uh, on, on a, on a simple request. I requested the best management practices, the water, uh, water quality plan and asbestos plan and the demolition, yeah, demolition permits, all for the mall, right? All this stuff that should be readily available because they just approved the demolition of the mall. And Public Works said, we can't get that to you. We don't have it. So everything that you're supposed to have in place, you don't have, and they extended my request. I wrote back, I said, this is absolutely unacceptable. How do you not have these documents on hand when you're ready to knock concrete and grind it into the lungs of our community? City clerk got back and said, oh, well, that's, that, please let the department, we'll let the department know because they're the ones holding your, your, you're holding back your request. So these departments are holding up our requests. Because they don't want to give us information. Same thing. I had another person who requested three days worth of emails from a city employee. Three days. And they requested it last month. It'll be a month and a half and they still have not received the emails. One person, three days. So it, it, it is absolutely unacceptable, Gina. Absolutely. And so the city clerk may be getting their new technology. They also have the largest staff in, in, in a, over a decade. So I'd just like to see more done, but congr- congrats to them. Uh, do you think they are intentionally delaying? Yeah. Oh, I absolutely believe you guys at this point. Uh, the city is hiding as much as they can. They are doing the wrong thing. And I, I don't wanna, this, I really want to stay close to the agenda on this, but because we're talking about public records, um, absolutely. We are, we are still in the midst. I thought, I really thought it was gonna get better. It felt like it was gonna get better. But look, someone said this perfectly um, last night. The same players are in the room. The council was all re-elected. You have the same elected officials for the last four years, for the last two years, the same seven people who have sat collectively together, and here we are. We're still fighting for information. We're watching them tell us that they're lying. We are watching the, you know, the, just the, the city fall apart. Uh, the, the So I, I really do think that they're huddling together to figure out how to, how to keep us out again. And, and you know, we thought that John was the head of the snake, but it, it, it's really not. He was just, you know, he just had a lot more venom in him. So we just gotta keep, keep pushing forward and, and we gotta keep pulling records and we just, you can't, you know, you can't let your, your, your foot off their neck. You just can't. And, and that's, that's where we are. So but we'll talk more about that, I promise. I just want to try and stay as non-political as possible. Uh, the discussion on tenant protection options to protect city residents facing housing instability. So let's look at that. Some of y'all were trying to talk to me earlier and I was like, let's, let's talk about this collectively. So we're gonna go to three thirty-five and what that means. Um, let's see, let me check comments. Oh, yeah, we put, you know, our nonsense, it just, it, it, it can be crazy sometimes. Uh, they're trying to read, to rewrite their own history. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean, people who, people who don't like the truth, uh, when, I, I just gotta say this, when people are like, you should be positive. You guys should, you guys should just talk about the positive things while they're burning the city. Look over here. That's, that's the whole, it's a smoke and mirrors. It is gaslighting. It is the most unreal thing because hey, you know what? Our community can go out and do the most awesome and greatest things in the world, but then when you turn, when the city itself gets on the news because they violated the law, don't look at us for that, that we're negative. Go look at your own actions. So let's be fair to that. That's crazy. Um, okay. So tenants' bill of rights i- in essence. So approving a legal aid tenant protection pilot program provides staff direction to continue to discontinue further studies needed to develop and implement a residential stabilization ordinance. Uh, okay. So on October sixth of two thousand twenty-one, the council first raised the prospect of establishing a local tenants' bill of rights that would apply citywide. And that would That would apply citywide and that would one, ensure language access by requiring advanced notification greater than the current applicable standards. And two, extend current mobile home park rent increase standards to all rental units within the city. On November second, twenty twenty-two, staff went before the council to discuss the Tenant Protection Act of two thousand nineteen. And consider the needs of further studies related to the tenants' bill of rights. Mayor and council heard public comment from those expressing support for tenant protections as well as from landlords who vo- voiced opposition. The direction from council was that staff would return with some viable options that provide different levels of tenant protection along with potential impacts. Okay. I remember that, that's what we're, at least we're there. Um, let's see, they're already posting, posting to get people to speak up for rent control. Get ready for another night of orange shirts and decrease speaking time, oh yeah, and and look. It's got, remind me, as we go through this, we, I wanna address what you're talking about, if anybody's watching, I think there has to be. Far. Better. Co- uh organization coordinating in these public comments, so great points, Scott, great point. So, uh, the city has a limited supply of affordable housing, housing instability threatens community health and safety as evictions cause hardships. The cost of rental application fees, security deposits, play stress, anxiety and financial burden on individuals and families. Before making recommendations, staff researched existing state laws, spoke to representatives from other cities who have addressed or attempted to address tenant protection rights. Reviewed alternative options and spoke to consultants who specialize in helping cities establish rent control. Okay, we got the Costa Hawkins Act, I don't wanna go too far into it, so let's look at the financial impact. This is. Um, establishing rent restrictions and just cause eviction regulations with enforcement mechanisms. Such as rent review boards or individual independent reviewer could cost several millions considering the necessary staff. Legal support and size of the city. As with other programs of this nature, the city may recover some or all of these costs through rent registration fees, which would need to be studied. To get a better understanding of the me- of the mechan- mechanisms involved, staff spoke with representatives from the city of Pomona, Santa Ana and city of Corona. Each of these cities provide some level of rent stabilization. In order to keep a citywide comprehensive plan that provides tenant protection, a consultant with specialized skills and experiences needed. The consultant ranges from four hundred thousand to five hundred thousand annually. And the cost to manage and maintain rent stabilization, six hundred thousand to three million annually. I'm gonna call BS. I'm going to absolutely call BS that it would, you would pay someone a half a million dollars a year. The consult. For that. It's a specialized skill to, for, for something that already exists, get out of here. Get out of here and then six hundred thousand to three million annually for ordinances? Stop. Stop it. Get out. I can't, I can't with you guys, you're doing too much, how come Pomona only paid a million and Corona only paid two hundred thousand? You guys, look, I wanna say something and I, I think this is so important. Because I, I wanna draw this parallel on the idea of who we are and the size of our city, okay? I know that we're the county seat, okay, we're the largest city in the county of San Bernardino. But we only have two hundred and twenty-three thousand people. And I, and I wanna use this comparison because. We talk about how we compare to the city of Los Angeles. The city of Los Angeles has two million residents. We have two hundred and twenty-three thousand, they have two million. Our entire county. Has two million people, the count, the entire population of the county of San Bernardino. Could live in the city of Los Angeles. So we don't even compare. To. To them. At all, like, at all. And so when we talk about the idea, and and look, our, our city is roughly fifty-five percent renters. So. There's a lot of wiggle room as far as, as rent control, I'm, I just, I'm not a fan, I'm gonna tell you why. Because other cities. That are much more affluent than ours are fighting affordable housing. And what I think in the, in the midst of this discussion, it does. With looking, I, I believe in a, in a tenants' bill, I get all this stuff, but. All it does is, is it segregates and pushes poor people into certain areas. And if rent control is gonna be a thing, rent stabilization, then it should be a statewide mandate. Put it all over every, so you can move to any city by the beach, by the mountains, in the desert, in the inland empire. Uh, um, you know, in central California, wherever you wanna be, we all have to abide by those rules. Otherwise. You're gonna create a problem, I, I own a systemic, uh, socioeconomic problem, I absolutely believe that. As far as these numbers, Beverly Hills too, Beverly Hills should have to have rent, I mean, if we're gonna have to have rent control, everybody should have rent control. I mean, i- i- it's, it's really. Out of control, also in looking at this. One thing that we could do immediately. Is require yearly inspections. Of all rental homes. Apartments, condos, townhouses, you have to have an inspection. To get your license to rent, if you can't pass a basic ex- eh inspection that you don't have mold, that you. That you're, this, uh, the living place is up to standard, you can't rent. Because this is really affecting, this affects slum lords more than anything else, and that's who you see will come and fight this. And remember, our slum lords are sort of the largest contributors to our elected officials. So. There's, eh, there's a lot, um. I think this is an interesting, how they claim a downside is that landlords will have less money to cover needed maintenance on the property. And may choose to defer it as long as possible, they're already doing it now. If anybody looks at the, at the. The apartment complexes around the city, they are rundown, they don't, they have zero oversight. In fact, if we had the proper oversight in place, what happened on Fourth Street would have never happened. You wouldn't have people living in rat-infested, uh, mold-infested rundown for ten dormitory rooms. So. It's just, it's, it's a very interesting dynamic, I like that the city went out and did this stuff, but here's the thing, no one's done anything. No one has done anything to mitigate. Living standards in general, Scott says rent control means rental property owners will sell. And or not invest in improvements and investors won't put their money into real properties. That, that, that's true, absolutely, and here's, but here's the thing. If we are helping people. Shift from renting to buying. And we start putting these programs into place. That also shifts the dynamics of our community. And and homeownership is huge. For uh generational wealth, for security purposes, for community improvement and investment. So there's a lot to consider, I, I really like this piece, I think this is, you know, there's a lot, there's good and. And that, I hope this is, I hope like we're having right now, the larger discussion, I mean, this is just an agenda review, but. It's interesting, and this will serve between four hundred to five hundred, so this program for tenant protection would serve between four hundred and fifty to five hundred tenants annually. I mean, roughly, that means that we would, we have about a hundred thousand renters if we're fifty percent, right? Actually, we have sixty-three thousand households in this city. So whatever that would be for, for renting, um, so anyways, if you guys wanna look into this more, I just thought this was a interesting, you know, coming back and. But. I think there, it's, the, the number is outrageous, outrageous to tell me you're gonna charge someone five hundred thousand dollars. You know what, I will bid on that, I will figure it out for a half a million dollars to consult for a city annually. And. To manage and maintain rent stabilization ordinances, six hundred thousand to three million, you're gonna tell me BB and K? That we pay millions of dollars to doesn't have anybody that knows about rent control and rent stabilizer, get out. Get out, so. Okay, there you go, there's that one. There needs way more discussion. Okay, and what's else we got? Tenant protection, the American Rescue Plan funded entrepreneur development, so. This is the, these are, I'm sorry, these are the funds. Okay, you'll share the job with me, I love that, or I'm here for that, well, I will create a whole. A whole group, we will all be in on it. Um, is there a commission to address or create an ad hoc to get all the information? Uh, the, no, this is, this Gina is just the discussion straight at the council meetings, there is no ad hoc, um, available. Now, I, and I think you grieve, um. You, when you gave your public comment. At the last meeting. To to, you know, we used to have a public safety and a human relations commission. And they were separate and now they're one, and I really think that public safety, but human relations is a very different. Dynamic, especially how I think we need to address social issues, because. How you would address, um. Human relations may not always be the approach for how we should deal with public safety and. Watching that, and I, I think there's a better way. To create, uh, you know, homeless, public relations, you know, housing tenant ad hoc commission for residents that put input on this. As well as what it takes to keep the, the public safe, so, um. I, I agreed, I totally agreed with what you had to say in the last meeting, I think that was, that we should look at that and see what they have to do, but here again, right? Receive and file, so if we go through all this work to have this committee and commission as people. Are they even gonna care, are they even gonna listen, some, so something to think about. Um. Okay, so maybe not enough citizens want to help, you know what, a lot of people wanna help. I think people just are so. Over. This. I mean, think of, I, I think about this a lot with our community, I, I mean, I, I, we have the most fantastic people. Who get, who are exhausted. They're exhausted of telling the people in charge to do something that they literally walked and knocked to go do. They said, hey, I wanna represent you and then got up there and were duds. And and are selfish or are are greedy or corrupt or just completely. Self-absorbed in the title and and not in the mission, and so. It makes people. Say for, throw their hands up, apathy. Is the most. Dangerous disease. It's the most dangerous social disease that is contagious. Is apathy, so that's why we're here, we engage, we educate, we empower and we pull people out of that apathy to do something. So. Um, here's something they're, they're going to do, so this is about the entrepreneurial center that they're going to build in conjunction with Cal State San Bernardino. So the Inland Empire Center for Entrepreneurship is, um, Cal State San Bernardino, working with the Aspen Institute. So this is gonna be cool, I'm excited for this, um, I, what's interesting though is. Um, this in conjunction with the Bebop Center, I really wanna point out that this is what Kim Carter and. Um, the Time for Change Foundation, the, the Bebop has, has pre-instituted and. Uh, I wanna do an update on that center because there are some amazing women of all colors. Coming out and starting their own businesses and really taking off in, in just a very wonderful space. And, um, as a woman and and someone that, um, you know. Appreciates. Resources, I think, you know, not everybody knows where to go. And now this place and has, has really, um, become a, a landing spot for many. And here, this entrepreneurial center, uh, that from Cal State is gonna be able to do the same thing and, and this is what takes. Us into the next phase of, of bringing back small business to our city, so I'm excited for that, I think that's great. If you do too, awesome, if you don't. Okay. Um, public hearing, so the appeal of the conditional use permit for public convenience or necessity. So it's recommended that the city council deny the appeal thereby upholding the planning commission's denial of a conditional use permit. And public convenience necessity not allowing the development establishment and operation of a market with a new alcohol beverage. Uh, type one license within an existing building containing. Two thousand twenty-four square feet, Mikey's Market, so I was there when they. Um, did this at the planning commission and I support, there's literally a market right down the street and like right next to a bunch of schools. I think MLK School is, is over there, um. Or no, it's not, off Fifth Street, that's baseline, um, anyways, um, this, this planned place was, uh. They, they didn't have community support, so, uh, I really don't think we need more liquor stores, just be honest with you. Uh, this is an appeal for commercial, commercial use permit, uh, minor exception. So, uh, uh, adopt. The denying appeal thereby upholding the planning commission's conditional, uh, and minor exception. To allow the development establishment and operation of a self-storage facility comprised of two multi-story buildings. Containing approximately a hundred nine thousand square feet and ten percent increase in the building height. Or a resolution granting the appeal, so here's, I'm gonna tell you guys about this. Because I, this is how tricky. Nathan Freeman. Community and economic development is. So. This, the, the planning commission. Um, had a whole public hearing on this and the community came, uh, the councilwoman came. And they said, look, we are in the process of developing the sixth ward. Less than. A quarter of a mile from this space, we already have a storage facility. We do not want a storage facility built across the street from Ingram Library, we are, we are trying to build housing and commercial development. Okay? So. They vote down. The, the people like, the commission's like, alright, fine, we, we denied this. Then all of a sudden, couple days later, there's the planning commissions called back into a special meeting. And they said, oh, well, you voted down this, uh, permit denying. This building, but, um, they were also asking to. Consolidate all the parcels into one and we want you to vote on that. And we need, and I was like, that doesn't constitute an emergency. It, it doesn't, and so luckily, the planning commission agreed, they all said, hey, this doesn't constitute an emergency. And they went back, re-agendized and they told the planning commission that. They wanted to consolidate these parcels because the owner was looking at other contenders now that this place had been voted down. But that Nathan Freeman and I, and, and his team are liars. Because what they wanted to be able to do was appeal the decision and had the parcels not been. Consolidated into one, they wouldn't be able to appeal this because the land wouldn't be ready for that type of use, these are the lies. This is the lie and deceit that our city will go to, to help someone who probably put money in their pocket. I don't know, but I can't figure out why you would be so deceitful and want to lie and. Deceive a community that told you they don't want this. So I, I'm interested to see how this goes, I, I just, I was. I knew they were going to do something, they were going to appeal because in the city just, boy. They did whatever it took to get them in, in position, um, for this, which means someone got their pockets lined, you had to, what? Who, I don't know, but we're gonna find out when the four sixties come. Cause they were meeting, they were talking. And, and it's, it's crazy. Um, the paper calls me the watchdog, yeah, they do, the city watchdog. Like a, a dachshund. You know what, um. We all are, we all just, we're all watching. And, and, I mean, eh, but here's the thing, they do it right in front of us, I, I mean, I wish this, like, these were that secret, but. Boy, did they do it publicly, um, okay, last item, the presentation of the proposed fiscal budget, so this is a public hearing, you guys. You can come and speak separately on the. You can come and speak separately on the budget and I want us to go over this, um, as quickly as possible. Look at some numbers, look at some things. Um, I hope that in the next couple of days you can kind of go over this, um. So I don't like how it's coming June fifth and we're only getting one public, you know, one, this is like the first chance. So, um, June first, twenty twenty-two, the city council adopted the operating budget, capital improvement plan and fiscal year twenty-four for two thousand and three. The adopted total estimated revenues amount were two hundred and sixty-six million ninety thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars. So general fund revenues were adopted in the amount of a hundred and eighty-nine million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand five, nine hundred and fifty-six respectively. Let's go where this kind of makes sense. Okay. This is a lot of information, but I wanna look at our revenues and our operating budget. So the proposed operating budget reflects a projected two hundred and eight million in the general fund revenues and two hundred million in general fund expenditures for twenty-three, twenty-four. The proposed budget anticipates a surplus of seven point five million. The ten percent economic contingency reserve is twenty million and a fifteen percent emergency reserve is thirty million, thirty point one million. Um, which maintains the required funding for reserves. I like this. This is good. This means we have money, um. Three point five million has been set aside for strategic initiative reserve and nine million has been reserved for capital contingency reserve, leaving one million unassigned fund balance. The details for the assignment of the strategic initiative reserve will be brought forward to the mayor and council as part of a citywide workshop. Okay, fine. Okay. Here we go. Let's look at us, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four. All right, budget reserves, two hundred and eight, budget expenditures, two hundred or two hundred million. So that leaves us with a balance of seven point five, um. They're putting it into strategic reserves and we're gonna have a million to play with. Um, that's cool. But here's the thing, let's see the breakdown of these reserves because remember okay, here we go. These are the revenues. I'm gonna kind of zoom in if you guys can see this. I realize there's a delay. My my apologies. Okay. So measure S is coming in at roughly fifty-one million. Now, remember, that's our our sales tax increase. Miscellaneous three million, but cannabis revenue. Here's, here's what, here's my big problem child. We are fifty-four percent down in cannabis revenue. We are not, we have put out all these licenses. We have given all this and we are not collecting the money on cannabis. Fifty pers- fifty-four percent down. Imagine what we could have done with seven million dollars. And and here's the thing about it, we're the ones responsible for collecting it. There's no, there's no reason that we shouldn't have this money. And if you forget, don't forget, we had to cut streets out of paving because we didn't have five million dollars. So here's, here's where the cannabis revenue could come in. Now fifty-one million in measure S funding. Big thing. Big, big thing. This is a quarter now, and this is why, now some of you, as you remember, I did not support the measure S uh, vote because there was no provision for how this money would be spent. There was no direction on where this money had to go other than into the general fund. And now, listen, the largest percentage of revenue in the general fund comes from the sales and use tax and measure S, which comprise of twenty-seven point eight and twenty-four percent of the proposed general revenues. So over fifty percent of our budget, a quarter, fifty percent of our budget is coming from sales tax and sales tax, use tax. Twenty-five percent of that was our measure S, was our extra penny. Do you guys know where that money's going? Cause I don't. There's, there is no direct cost. We don't see where it is. We don't see the programs and the measure S committee hasn't met in over a year. I I it's it's really problematic for me that here you are, and I I think this is what I'm gonna have, now I have to go to the meeting and say like, where, where is the twenty-five percent being allocated to? What programs, what services, what parks, what streets, what improvements? Nada. So I I mean, you can, they can gloat about measure us all they want, uh, but where, where are, where are we reaping the benefit? That's my, that's gonna be my question. Um, and imagine if we were also receiving our property tax. This is another area where we have to reevaluate our cost of services for fire versus the idea that we are giving them giving the county our entire property tax. It, you cannot tell me it takes the entire, I, my property tax went up. You cannot tell me that this house that I own now costs more to protect a day after I bought it than what the other people were paying on it, on their property tax. There is a, there is a real issue, a real issue. I think the county is is taking our money and I believe the city is is weak in trying to get it back. There's got, in perpetuity, are you crazy? So anyways, we need to fight this. This is why I wanna see the repeal of FP five. And and if that ever comes up on the ballot again, where we can repeal our fire zone, I hope the city gets behind it, but I digress. Cannabis is projected to have a fifty-four percent decrease due to a delay in opening several cannabis operations. There are operators that were expected to open that have received extensions and remaining in construction phase. Okay, this is ridiculous. That's not the reason because just less than six months ago, you told us it was because you weren't collecting the funds. So is it these delays or is it because we are not out there collecting the money that we need to be collecting? You can't have it both ways. And if people are still in the construction phase, you get your one in, your one extension and you gotta go. Cause we gotta make money. Everybody else out here making money. We need to be making money. Um, let's see. Capital improvements, city clerk, okay, so capital improvement projects, two million, city clerks, one point eight million. They have a thirteen percent increase. Uh, the city council's office, one, uh, one million eighty-four thousand, eleven percent increase. City manager's office has a, is at three million with a twenty percent increase. Community economic development, eleven million. God, jeez. Uh, wait, this is, this, so this is the budget for every, every department. Community economic development is eleven point seven million. Finance department, five point six million. General government, fifteen million. Human resources department, two point seven million. Legal services, this is BB and K. Is receiving four point three million. Twenty-three percent increase, you guys. The library is funded at two point eight million. Almost, yeah. The mayor's office is three hundred thousand. Park and rec, five million. The police department is a hundred and fifteen million dollars of our budget. Public works, twenty-nine million, almost thirty million dollars. And our special districts, a hundred and fifty thousand. Wow. Well, I guess that's, you know, anything, as long as public safety is less than sixty percent, you're okay. But that's fifty percent of our, over a little over fifty percent of our budget is going to the police department. And again, where, where's the measure S money going? So um, and capital improve, capital improvement projects, a two million dollar budget, that doesn't seem like enough to me, especially because you couldn't pave the streets. I think we need far more investments in capital improvements. We're a hundred million dollars behind. So there you go. It is a lot. Okay, so if you wanna read more into it, I'm sorry, guys, I just get into different topics and we're at our hour. So um, if you wanna learn more, please, by all means, um, jump online and and read the agenda. There's, um, a lot of information to to be had. Uh, if anybody, um, has any additional questions, please put them in the chat. And, um, I'll do a follow-up. I was gonna do the letter that I, that we did for the, um, what do you call it? For the violations for this because, but we'll do them another time. So, um, thank you. Yeah, pension costs are going up too. So thank you guys for watching. I appreciate you. Um, don't forget the meeting is coming up Wednesday. And, uh, please share this, get the word out as quick and as fast as possible. So have a great rest of your week, but I'm sure I'll probably do an update sometime. All right, you guys. Have a good night. Bye.